So, once again, thank you everybody for being here. We wanted to go ahead and call this meeting in about this time. So, our budget fiscal cycle, the first quarter of it closed in January. So, we had an opportunity to get all of our first quarter numbers, compile it into a report, and kind of get an opportunity to digest it. So, this is basically a first quarter results meeting. So, a lot of stuff will still continue to happen through the year as additional revenue comes in. We will have another one of these at least when we hit the half-year mark. We'll probably have some prior, but we'll definitely do this again because there's a lot of things that are starting to come online that we can't really see the results of just yet, that we're... The results are totally speculative in nature. So, as we kind of get to that six-month mark in the fiscal budget, we'll have a lot better idea on how those things are trending. So, a lot of our budget numbers right now are based on kind of speculative assumptions as far as where and how much the income is going to be that we use to craft this budget. So, I'm just going to start from kind of a high level and kind of go down. So, based on where we stood when we passed this budget a few months back, the budget that we're operating on, we basically passed it with about $700,000 in the red, okay? So, we did that to give an opportunity for the department heads to start working within their numbers. And based on some reporting, they've done a very good job with the numbers that we've given them. Now, that budget is obviously, we know how much we're going to spend. The only way we can spend money is by bringing it in. So, we make a lot of assumptions around income and things like that. So, just to kind of get into the numbers a little bit. We are basically at a... We are off $1,200 based on where we should be and where we are. So, dealing with an $18 million budget, that's pretty, that's pretty damn close to zero. So, I'm good with that number, you know? Of 1,000, as much stuff as we have coming and going, being off by about 1,200 bucks is not bad as far as I'm concerned. When you start looking through, and we all have copies of this, I believe, when we start looking at the income, there's a lot of income that we've already received, but there's a couple of things that are coming online here in the next few months. There's Mercedes and let's see, another big one, sales and use tax as collected throughout the calendar month. So, there's a lot of opportunity there. We've only received about 34% of that. And if we, if we take, you know, 100, and we're right on track there as far as that percentage goes, as far as what we have received. So, talking with James about the budget and the income, and I asked him like, "All right, so, we've got a number of things. We passed a budget that was 700 in the red when we passed it, and now we've got Sams to deal with." Oh, no, what do we do, right? I know, that's kind of been the hot topic lately, and we'll take some questions here in a little bit. Sams was a huge contributor to our, our sales tax for the city, about a tenth of our budget. So, a nice, a nice kick there. But when you start kind of doing the math, we rolled into, and I can talk more about this, but we rolled into this year's budget with a $700, $700,000 deficit, all right? With Sams, we're projected to lose about another 800,000, okay, as far as money that we're not going to be receiving. That comes to a whole of about 1.5 million, okay? Now, we, we knew about the 700,000 we passed the budget. So, we knew if push come to shove, we're going to have to probably take that out of reserve. We've already kind of figured that, okay? Out of that 700, I want to, I want to just remind everybody that there was an excess of about 300,000 from last fiscal year that rolled into the reserve, all right? So, I'm saying 700,000 from the reserve. There wasn't, there wasn't 300,000 in there really to begin with, okay? So, just to kind of pad that number a little bit. If we pulled that 700,000 out of reserve, that leaves a whole of about 800,000, all right? In talking with James about his estimates as far as income, he admits that those are definitely conservative numbers. If things continue, if our income continues to perform the way it has been, then he estimates anywhere from about 200 to 300 additional money coming in that we have not factored into our income stream, okay? So, if we take out 300, you know, 1,000 off of that 800, then we're boiling down to about a $500,000 gap, okay? There are a few boards out there. Well, there is a particular board out there that's got some money in surplus as well as, as well as a lease that generates some revenue. If we are able to get that turned over to us, then you take a 500, you take a $500,000 surplus, and now we're staring down the barrel of about 100 grand, okay? So, I just wanted to kind of run down that math and say, yes, there are some variables out there, but I just want to kind of, as far as Sams is concerned, yes, it stinks. It is, it's a kick. But when you start looking at all the numbers and, and the variables at play, it's, we've got this. So, I just want to go on record and say that we are, the sky is not falling. There is definitely a clear path to righteousness as far as getting us into the black, okay? So, and I've got these numbers up here. If somebody wants to ask me some more questions about it, I just wanted to run through the numbers real quick as far as how we're actually doing as a city. When you start looking at the budget as far as what money's have been spent, um...
Yes, next question.
Yeah.
You mentioned reserves.
Yep.
So, how much do we have in reserve before we pull this money out? Probably about 3.4 or something like that.
Well, I mentioned that to David. I said, "I know, every time somebody say, 'How much we have in reserve, how much we have in reserve,'" I said, "3 million."
Okay.
And we do have 3 million. But the council had committed 700,000 out of that 3 million. So, we really have 2.3.
Okay.
That's uncommitted.
So, by law, we need to have how much, how much we require.
The law doesn't require us to have a certain amount, but our financial policies require us to have at least 15% of our projected revenue.
Remind us who that 700,000 is committed to.
The budget, general budget.
That's what I thought, and I want, want to make sure. But if it's still in reserve, we haven't pulled it out.
No, we have pulled it out. It's still there. But I didn't want anybody to think that we have 3 million, and then all of a sudden, if I tell you it had to go down to 2.3, you say, "Well, what happened to that money?" I just wanted to let you know in front that you all committed that amount to be able to fill in the gap.
And, and we don't want to pull that until we have to pull that because as income comes in, you know, based on conservative numbers, you know, we would say, "Okay, we would need to pull that towards the end of the fiscal year." But if these income numbers do continue to perform above expectations, then that could, you know, soften the blow a little bit. So, that's, that's something that we'll be watching, and that's why having a, having a meeting at, at month six is very important because we're going to continue to receive some money from, say, sales tax and things like that, things that come in throughout the year, plus Mercedes will be coming online. Everybody's optimistic that they will be sailing above their projections. So, having a meeting at month six, once those two things continue to come in, I think will be crucial to give us an idea of how we're doing again. Hopefully, those numbers will continue to still be exceeding expectations. When you flip through the budget, and I know that we made some commitments to get this budget that was approved online. I know we haven't done it yet. I know we're getting a copy of, of what we actually approved, so Patricia can get it on the website. I think you're going to try to do that expeditiously pretty soon, right? Okay. So, that way, you'll be able to see a lot of the numbers that we're seeing. I think that will be, will be helpful for, for you guys. Because I know I've got about 80 pages of stuff up here that I'm talking from that I'm not necessarily showing. But when you start flipping through the various departments, pretty much everybody's on check as far as from a precision standpoint, how much money they should have spent, they're, they're on target. So, our department heads are doing a very, very good job managing the money that we've allotted them to, to spend. Once again, you don't spend it if you make it. So, that is, that's why those, those variables were crucial with our income exceeding expectations, like it has continued to do so. A couple of things I want to talk about. So, that's the budget. So, that's everything that's budgeted, right? There's a couple of things out there, about 10 odd items that we've done historically that were never budgeted into that. So, we, we factored in what our department has needed, but there were a lot of things that were left out. A good example of that, Whistle Stop left out of the budget. Chamber of Commerce was left out of the budget. We've already crossed that bridge with the Chamber. There was some about, every year, we approve about 35,000 in grants for various projects with Irondale City Schools, laptops, calculators, all that stuff. So, that was left out. The Counselor's Discretionary Fund, that was, that was next. Mayor's Discretionary, next. Irondale Spring Festival, not in the budget. Jazz in the Park, not in the budget. Money about 6.5 for various community programs, community programs not in the budget. And, let's see, Irondale will move not. And then Iron Beach did a program last year, once again, not in the budget. So, there's $100,000 worth of fun stuff that we normally do historically that was not in the budget. So, we've got a...
With the Spring Beach.
They had that up at Beacon. They had a workout fair.
I coordinated that along with Irondale Spring, Spring Beach.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that there was some money that was, that was, I guess, budgeted for that last year.
How much we spent on that?
No, it was...
The budget, the budget was that agreement with...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting the two things tangled up. I apologize.
What they do, they do the...
We did, we did a fitness in the park.
Right. Now, I'm sorry. I was getting that confused with their contract for the employees. My bad.
That was just part of what they did for the city.
Council members filed, but their contract is not included in the budget.
That's what I'm saying. Yes, things that have been done historically that were not budgeted. I was just kind of going down line by line. I just got tangled up in as far as the, the, what they did in the park versus the employee program. So, there's about 100,000, 153,000 worth of stuff that we've done historically that is not in the budget. So, we've still got to figure that out. Now, we've already crossed the bridge with Chamber of Commerce. We still have to cross the bridge with Whistle Stop. Asian Culture has come to us with a request. So, those are, those are all various things that we have got to make decisions on as far as do we want to find ways to fund those things or do we want to not? So, that's some things that, if we want to talk about that tonight, we can.
What is the, I have a question. What is the bridge we crossed with Irondale Chamber?
Well, we went ahead and approved their 40,000. We've already done that.
I got 50,000 in the budget. We gave them 40,000.
We gave them 40.
All right. So, we gave 40,000 in this year's budget, too.
Yep.
That's past years.
No, we approved that beginning of this.
That year, we gave them actually 40,000, but we budgeted 50,000. So, we came in 10,000 under on that. And I was asking, what did we, we gave 40,000 this year already?
Hmm. So, that's what they were asking for. So, we went ahead and, and took care of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce with, for 40,000. So, obviously, Whistle Stop is looking at, Whistle Stop Festival is looking at getting some contracts as far as, you know, moving forward with this year's festival. I know, Bobby Joe, you brought up Spring Fest already, and we've talked about a few other things. There's, there's a grant request coming up from the school system. So, we have to figure out what we want to do as far as that book is concerned, and just various, various other things. I know Jazz in the Park is something we've done historically. I think John mentioned maybe not doing that this year. So, so we've, we've got some things. Joe, do you guys still have this list? Okay. So, those are, those are things that if we want to talk about that tonight, I want to...
I think we have another copy.
I wanted to, you know, open up the floor to talk about those various items as far as if we want to make a decision.
Two more that I know are coming to you all. I'll just go to the cultural festival.
Right.
Bobby Joe, one of the...
And also class training. In the past, the city has budgeted some line for class training.
Now, it's been a year since we did the last class training because for some reason it's fresh in my memory.
Yeah, class training.
Let me ask James a question if I may.
Sure.
You sent us on the email to you, an income statement and a budget report. They both look like the same thing to me. What's the difference of them?
The income statement, if you look at the bottom line, it's the same because it shows you the same revenue and expenses.
Mm-hmm.
The budget report gives you the percentages.
Percentage, okay.
At the present time, we should be 33% of the budget. Should, that's where we should be. If you're looking at those, that column, things should be 33% of or more to be where they should be at this time of the year. If you look at the income statement, it actually gives you the dollar amount. So, we just want to see the difference between what was budgeted and what has been, what has been recorded up to that point. It'll show you the amounts and what the difference is in the amounts.
I like the percentages personally. That's what works for me. But yeah, you're, yeah, they're, they're basically kind of the same thing. So, so I want to open up the floor tonight to talk about some of those non-budgeted items, see where our thoughts were there. That's definitely one thing.
Let me, let me, let me say one thing as far as the events. We already voted against the Spring Fest. I don't think John is in favor. Well, I don't know. I won't say in favor, but I don't think the Jazz in the Park is gonna, is gonna happen. So, are we talking about Spring Fest? Are we still talking about Spring Fest since we didn't have any other events? Are we still talking about that?
Well, I mean, I, my comment to you was...
Or is that off the table, too?
My, my comment to you about Spring Fest was I didn't want to talk about Spring Fest until we had an opportunity to talk about finance as a whole. So, that's why I'm saying I want to open the floor to talk about those things. I voted against it because I didn't want to talk about it until we had an opportunity to talk about finance.
But at the same time, we knew Spring Fest was right around the corner. So, we couldn't, I mean, time was of the essence. So, that was, that's why it was brought up.
Okay.
You know, we couldn't wait until, what, April or, or first of March or whatever. So, that's why we had to get it on the agenda and decide on something, you know? I mean, we couldn't do it.
I was only basically with my comments, I was talking about basically pushing it back two weeks.
Pushing Spring Fest back?
Yeah. Well, no, not, not the event itself, but the decision on it because we just tabled it basically last week. So, it's only been one week since we initially talked about it. So, I mean, I would have expected it to probably be an, an agenda item on, on next council.
Y'all, y'all don't want to break that.
That means that you and me or Steve would have put it on the agenda. Bobby Joe and John can't because they were in the minority vote.
Understood. But once again, this is an opportunity to talk about those things. So...
Well, one of you has to change. I'll say the same thing I said the last time. When we voted, increase lodging tax, even though we're talking about the deficit that we're in right now, I think still, for the purpose of why we raised lodging tax, that money still could have been set aside to use for these particular events that we're talking about because that's what we told our citizens. We, we put it out there. That's why we raised it. We, it was another bucket at one time that we included in the budget. It was a separate line item that we did use for that. But the purpose was in order to even promote our hotels here, and that was part of the agreement. But at the same time, you know...
For the sake of that discussion, I did read your ordinance. If you will verify, this is the one I read from the other night, and the wording you referred to is not what you said. And that's the most current ordinance that I could find.
Well, it's, it's more general terms, and it does include a lot of other things.
That could probably be more.
It was not, can I say something?
No, pardon.
It was not in the ordinance that that's what it was intended for. It was just a general agreement between the council members that were present at the time.
Economic development, I believe, was the terminology.
It does, it does say in the ordinance what it was restricted for.
Says restricted use of...
It's very specific in there.
On the last page, section, excuse me, section one.
And, and you couldn't have an agreement outside your council anyway. You have to, you all have to take action as a group up here. But nevertheless, I mean, that is really irrelevant, I think, to what you're asking. The question you're asking is, maybe look at all these events and say, "What, what, what if any, all, none, or part of them are you going to be able to fund?" Because the, if, James, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but there is not a separate bucket of money for lodging tax, correct?
Correct.
It's, it's a part of the budget. Is that correct?
Yes, it's part of it.
Of the budget as we have, as the numbers that you described, it's in those numbers already. So, so whether you have or take away or whatever, it's got to come out of those numbers that you have.
Let me, let me explain. It was separate as far as the 3% increase. We had that as a separate line item. It wasn't a bucket that was just set aside over here saying that we could draw from that bucket in order to have these events. Let me make, let me be very clear on that. It was part of the budget, but at the same time, we was using the 3% increase to, number one, promote our hotels, number two, to bring events as far as to the city. So, we wouldn't have to draw from the original budgeted amount that we had from the revenue that we were receiving. That 3% was a separate line item, I guess you would call it.
We, we put it, we put it in, we put it in the budget. We voted to put it in the budget as a separate line item, but it wasn't in the ordinance that, that that's where that money would go. It was just an agreement between the council members at that time present that voted for it, that we would use part of that portion of that money and put it in the budget for these events or something.
And that is still happening. It's not, and nobody's disputing that it didn't used to be a line item in the budget. It's not a line item in the budget now.
Right. It's not.
Yeah, but there's no dispute that maybe five years ago or 2013, whenever you did it, that, that year, you put it in as a line item in the budget. But it wasn't in, I don't think it was in last year, was it?
No, it wasn't. What really transpired was, this is my recollection, recollection of what happened, is that the city increased lodging tax by 3%. They said that they would allocate 1% of that to events, and the purpose of that would be to bring events into the city or to have certain type of events in the city that would bring individuals to stay in the city, to be a way of showing goodwill towards the hotels. So, when you see all of those events, you don't actually see a line item for it. But when you see money for Whistle Stop, when you see money for Spring Fest, when you see it for all these different events, even though it's not a line item by itself, we're still using a portion of that lodging tax that we said that we would use for those events to be able to fund those events. But it's in the complete total for the lodging tax. It's not a separate line item by itself.
So, so for that, to, to have the effect of law, of the rule of law, there has to be a resolution or a decision that says that that's what you're going to do. What you have is the, what you pass.
Yeah, general, we have a downwinds agreement that that's what it's used for.
And you can read it, and it does not exclude events. It says other projects. So, you can do other projects. But it also talks about economic development and other things to promote the city than, than just events. So, there's not a dispute about the, the fact that we do those kinds of things. I guess the dispute is, is that it's not a separate pot of money that you got to go to and find. It's not the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. It is already budgeted in, and you can take as much of that as you want that's already budgeted in and reallocate it to wherever you want. But it has to come out of that because that's all there is.
And being the fact that there's no surplus in the budget, there's no surplus in lodging, therefore, there's no money per se earmarked to that.
Right. You can, you can promote it whatever you want for whatever event, but you've got to take it from somewhere else.
Right.
But my only thing is, this is what, and you know what? As far as the ordinance, as far as how it was written, maybe it wasn't written right because based on what was discussed, you know, during that time, whoever, you know, wrote the ordinance or whatever the case may be, maybe it wasn't written correctly.
But it's what you voted on.
But we voted on what we discussed. So, therefore, like I said in the beginning, I think the money that we allocated or when we passed lodging tax, we're not doing what we stated to our citizens that that's what we were going to do. So, now, this money that we, this increase that we voted for, we're using it just for general fund purposes.
The reason, the reason that we memorialize these in resolutions and ordinances is so that five years later, we're not sitting here having a discussion saying, "Well, we talked about this, or we thought we did that." What you have in your hand is what you voted on, and what you vote on is what becomes the rule of law. No matter what you think you said, what you think you talked about, or what you did talk about, what you vote on, what becomes a part of the ordinance of the city of Irondale is what you have to go by until you change it.
I and James were just trying to explain the situation behind the lodging tax, not, not, not to say that, you know, that we want to take that money out now.
I, I understand. I'm just trying to...
Just trying to explain what happened and what went forward.
That wing will be the evidence.
All right.
And I just, just a closing comment on that.
Sure.
It is very clear that it says, "Be used for endeavors that will attract individuals to the city of Irondale to patron its businesses and events." It does say that.
Sure.
But we need to judge what we sponsor based on whether or not it is an internal event that only suits the citizens, or does it bring in outside and does it actually help the businesses in tune?
It does.
Well, so, we, we, well, what I'm getting at is, I asked James, because Whistle Stop is also a part of this conversation. So, I asked James, you know, and Bob, I might lean on you a little bit for this, okay? Thanks for being here. Christopher reached out to me and said, "Hey, you know, I know the typical, the resolution is, is 12,000, okay? That's what we've been getting historically. We can do this with, you know, help from in-kind services with the city, public works, police, fire, as well as maybe a little help towards the insurance policy." Bob, is that about, as far as the insurance policy specifically, is that about, can you, can you put a dollar amount on that?
Somewhere between 3 and 3,500.
Okay. So, I was thinking those are a little less than that. So, we're taking about a $12,000 ask for Whistle Stop down to maybe about a $6,000 ask. So, that's something else to consider when we start talking about Whistle Stop versus what we've done historically. And not trying to put words in Christopher's mouth, but does that kind of line up with what he's, what you guys are asking for? Is in-kind plus help with insurance?
Yes.
Okay. So, taking something down from...
With the understanding that by taking that 12, we can't say exactly all that we will or won't have.
I know you'll have to update the contract a little bit as far as what the festival will actually provide. But asking James to quantify, you know, to quantify the, the services that the city provides is about 3,000 and then about $2,000 in insurance. And Bobby Joe, I'm pretty sure that the staffing situation for Spring Fest is about, that James said it was about on par. So, the city's paying about 3,000 for public works, police, and fire, and I don't know if the city covers. I'm assuming the city covers the insurance for Spring Fest?
I'm sure they do.
Okay. Would that be a similar number to what you were saying here?
That it was included here in our policy. So, it was no additional cost for it.
But, but I will say contrariwise. What has been said, Spring Fest is, was still the least expensive event that the city put on. Least expensive.
Probably truck retrieve.
No. It was the least expensive event that was put on in the city.
And again, I think it's a simple decision. We want to do something for the citizens. I figured we had tops of turnout, maybe 500 or less. So, we're doing something for less than 10% of the population when money's needed for other things.
Right.
I'm just going to go out on land here. I think we're at a point, based on what you said, we off the moratorium till we get to six months uptake, and then look at projects. Because right now, I think we would be, we would be against our duties. We'd like to be a better steward to really see what's going to happen at six months. That's just my comment.
So, as far as any of those other unbudgeted items, and, and the Asian Cultural Festival that will be probably coming to us, which is making a blanket statement, which you're advocating is a blanket statement, that we need to wait till we hit the six-month mark.
At least before we do anything else. That's just my opinion.
Terry, thoughts?
All right. Go along with, wait until we see what's going on. You know, see where we're going to be financially.
Bobby Joe?
Whatever the council decides.
Fair enough. All right. So, let's also, and this will impact that conversation a little bit. We obviously know that we've got the, the property tax increase vote coming up. So, once again, this is not us saying that we're putting this property tax on you. We approved the, we approved the resolution to give you guys the... we approved the resolution to give you guys the opportunity to vote for the tax, okay? So we've got a sample of what's gonna be in your water bill, um, this next water bill, and it breaks down the math as far as how six mils affects you, so please be on the lookout for this, and I've got it up here if you guys wanna take a peek of it. And there's also on the backside of it, yes, please, not only, please pull this out of the water bill, please read both sides. Um, there is also a breakdown of what the, what the money will be used for. Uh, a vote for the referendum will increase the municipal portion of the property tax by six mils per year. Money's collected for the additional property tax will be used to support Irondale on the move initiatives such as economic development, public service and infrastructure, recreational spaces. So please, and then once again, hundred thousand dollar house, six mils, sixty bucks a year. Okay, so just kinda, like I said, once again, just take a look at this, when you get in your water mill, so you'll know exactly uh what we're talking about, how that will impact you financially and, um, and what the funds will be used for, so you guys can vote accordingly. So we've got that tax coming down the pipe, alright, uh, we've obviously got some, some deficit, deficit issues, okay, so great, we fix it this year. Now what happens next year, okay? Cause the property tax isn't gonna go ineffective till next year, so yes, it will uh help us accomplish some things, but at the rate we're spending versus what we're making, there's still some challenges. So we still have to say, okay, how do we bring a couple of bucks in extra into the door? Um, one thing I would like to open up on the floor is a conversation around occupational tax. Okay, right now, Irondale does not have an occupational tax, so I wanted to do a, get some conversation started around that. Um, if that was implemented, uh, it could take effect within about a month of implementation. Uh, and it could go a long ways into uh filling our gaps and, and as far as the, the budget is concerned, so.
And I make a suggestion in opposition to the occup, or the occupational tax.
Sure.
Um, about four or five years ago, it may not have been that long ago, Dave, maybe you can help me. We raised the car sales tax from one percent to one and a half. If I'm not mistaken, Birmingham, Trustville, Leeds, they all have a two percent tax, is that correct? No, Trustville, Birmingham do.
I know, I know that Birmingham, Birmingham's two percent and that state is two percent.
Okay, uh, how much are we getting revenue from uh sales tax now on automobiles?
If it's on here.
Um, do you know, it seemed like it was about six million dollars the last time I checked.
No, it's, it's not quite that much, it's probably closer to three and a half to four million dollars from, from here. It makes up about half of the sales and use tax that won't come in.
We got nine percent, uh, nine, nine million dollars on the budget, I got uh for expected nine point four million. If it's half of it, that's gonna be, uh, what, four and a half million if we raise it.
I mean, less than half, but it's, it's, it's about three and a half to four million.
Well, if we raise the uh sales tax on automobiles to another half a percent, that would bring us in line with uh Birmingham and, and Trustville and it would not adversely affect the citizens of Irondale unless they purchasing their car from within the city. And that might break in, bring in a million dollars.
We, we only have one issue with that.
Alright, what's that issue?
When we signed the development agreement with Mercedes.
I, I understand, we can't, we can't raise there, but we can raise to everybody else.
And I don't know if that would, that's probably a question for Rob, but I, I don't know if that would be equitable to, to raise. If you could set a tax where it hits everybody except for uh for one dealership, but it was in that development agreement that the city would not increase.
I remember it was in the contract.
Taxes on automobiles for fifteen years.
Weren't, weren't they set at one percent anyway? Weren't, they set in the contract at one percent?
It's at one and a half, just like everybody else, but the city agreed not to increase it beyond one and a half uh for fifteen years.
And that was validated by the court, so.
Alright.
If you were to raise the tax on the other dealerships, that would be okay.
Hmm, sure, okay. Good thoughts, but I'm.
But you know, that's, that's, that's a million dollar additional income we could bring in the city and we'll take care of our deficit.
You're saying we can't do that, right?
No, you could.
Okay.
We could, but he said it's.
I don't, I don't think you would be, I think you would be back for him to raise it on, others would say you're not gonna raise it on.
You may run a chance at a point of delivery sales.
Yeah.
So that they could take the revenue outside, but there is a save that.
Exactly.
They take it in Birmingham, they're gonna pay them two percent.
I think there are other areas in Birmingham that are.
And let's, let's talk about, alright, so from a show of hands, and I know this is a very small sampling, I'm just, um, anybody that lives and works in Irondale other than city employees, okay? So, thank you, so, um, so yeah, that would be, there would be an impact there, okay? Um, all of our surrounding municipalities charge this.
Um, all of them?
Well, most of them in our nearby city, I know Birmingham charges one, Trustville charges one.
Hmm, hmm, not in favor of doing that, if we've got other opportunities, then I think the car tax would be an opportunity.
Think about this though, and, and we have to look at the, the Amazon effect on things. Um, let's take Sam's for example, let's say someone buys Sam's and, which is great, you know, um, they get a business in there. Um, and with the Amazon effect, what we're seeing is a lot of people, and this goes for a lot of the industry that we have here in, um, a lot of the manufacturing industry we have, they make great stuff here, um, great stuff is brought here and sold. Uh, but very little of it is actually delivered in our city. So from a sales tax standpoint, we lose a lot of that opportunity, uh, because things are delivered outside of the city. Um, if, if, as more retailers go to the online model, um, you're going to have more places that are not necessarily selling things where they are stationed, but shipping things to, to other states, other municipalities, heck, even other, other countries, Sydney.
Doesn't the city get a portion of that Amazon sales tax?
State does.
Nothing, small portion.
Only, only if you put the correct zip code in and force it to say, Patricia, no?
If you put, no.
It doesn't, it's broken up based on, it's like two percent that's broken up based on the municipality's size.
Okay.
And that's only, that's only a very select group, Amazon, Amazon, or most, most online retailers would not have that.
Right, but the moral of the story is, we're, we, we are steering down an, a industry shift that is going to lessen our ability to, to make a humongous chunk of our revenue off the sales tax. That's why I'm, I'm a proponent of occupational tax.
I'll give you two, if I give you two examples, just to, in relation to what you're covering up. Um, I know for a fact the Sam's Club property was shown in the past week to a company developer uh that could buy the property and could move into the property and would have zero retail sales, okay? And without any zoning change, okay? So what that would mean is, is you would get a business license fee off of that business, but you would get no sales tax revenue from what we were formerly getting, you know, one, one, four million dollars for the business. Um, fabric jungle building, same situation, of course, now it's been empty, and so it's not like Sam's just pulled out and we're losing that in this budget year. But that property, there, there is a contract on that property by exactly what you were talking about there. Someone who will do most of their business online will, will manufacture or, or assemble their product there and will ship it all across the country, all across the world, uh, so it will be shipped out that way. So, uh, again, you will get on, unless you happen to, to order living in Irondale, you're gonna get it delivered to your home, the bulk of that business will be outside of Irondale, we'll get enough sales tax on it. But that, that is a shift in just how the world is, is moving and operating today. I mean, think about your own purchases, what you purchase online, what you pay sales tax on, and what you don't pay sales tax on, and that's, that's a good example.
And you do have to be very specific because the three five two one oh zip code extends into Birmingham. Cause I know we got a notice when we lived in Mountain Brook to specifically put Mountain Brook on our address, not Birmingham. Although most people use Birmingham, but we didn't see the revenue if you didn't use that, so that's, that's the problem. And most retailers do not recognize Irondale, they recognize the largest nearby municipality.
So that is, that's a decision that I believe is on our shoulders to make, but occupational, so, you know, I wanted to.
You're asking, you're asking, you're, you're, you're putting a burden on the people that live here and work here of, of occupational tax, and then you're asking them to raise their property tax or you're taxing them twice.
Right, I understand.
An object to that.
And I, I work in Birmingham, my property taxes are gonna be going up, and I currently pay occupational tax to the city of Birmingham.
I do too.
You know, um, so it's something that we've got, it's something we've gotta wrestle with.
We haven't talked anything about expense. Uh, the mayor has done some good renegotiating on certain things, we've lowered some costs. Are there any big things out there from the perspective, Mr. Stewart, you know more about, for example, other insurances? Are we locked in, who we get our insurance, for example, for health and welfare of our employees?
Yes, the health insurance came in around October, so that rate is currently locked in. We had three hundred and seventy-one thousand budgeted for workers' comp, but we're only gonna spend three hundred thousand, so that's about seventy-one thousand that we would see there. Uh, property and casualty was already pretty much locked in, but I think it went down, well, no, it went up a little bit because of uh automobile rates. So it went up a little bit, but it's still within the amount that we projected for the budget. So I can't think of any of the big expenses that we have in the budget, uh, that is going to be reduced, uh, during the year.
When we get ready, do we have an option to renegotiate any of our insurances at the point they are up for renewal?
We don't have anything, we're pretty much locked in for this fiscal year.
No, I'm saying at some point now we're gonna be.
Yes, every, yeah, every, every year we, we revisit the policies to make sure that they're in line with what we need and to, uh, the, the only thing about it, there's not a lot of municipal carriers out there. Uh, and when you have a police department and a fire department, you bring a certain amount of risk, uh, that you didn't have those departments. So there are only maybe two or three major players that are out there that are in the municipal market, but we try to ask the broker every year that if he would look into the market before we renew with anybody to see that there's a better deal, a comfortable deal, lower price, uh, more efficient, um, if it's out there.
The, uh, when you're talking about the police and fire, the jail, uh, also incurred risk, and we discussed, uh, contracting our jail out. It was before, is it any cheaper to contract a jail out and, and reduce that insurance?
I would say yes, I mean, anytime you can get rid of a jail, you can, you reduce your liability, so you end up with a cheaper cost.
That's something we could look at, see if.
No, the mayor's. Uh, we talked about that added tonight, I mean, just about every deal the chief's been able to tie, rankle up, has been turned down by.
Yeah, I'm happy to hear your report on that, we, um, we were this close to, uh, doing it with St. Clair County. Um, sheriff was in agreement with it, uh, and then the commission, I don't know what happened, got a gold fee or whatever, and, and backed out. Uh, so that put us back to, to relooking at that. We have been, the chief has been talking to Terrence, um, they have a history of housing other prisoners. Uh, they, they housed for a year or, or longer for Fortinale, when their jail was being renovated or being repaired. And, uh, both the mayor and the police chief seem to be in favor of it there, we have not nailed down the final agreement, but hopefully we'll, we'll be able to do that.
Okay.
That's what we're, that's what we're looking at right now, that is the.
Chief's very active.
Okay.
Let go of that one, cause he agrees with you.
So you would say, y'all both agree, at this moment, there is none, none of our major contracts are up to a point where renegotiation is available and there's no squeezing any extra money?
Yeah, I, I can just speak from, uh, what I've shared publicly here over the last couple of weeks. Um, we reduced contracts, either eliminated and reduced contracts by two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, over the course since, since we started this administration. Uh, that's annually. Um, I don't, I don't see any more there under that, that, uh, very, very minimal. Um, I made the off the cuff remark the other day, there's not enough, not paper clips in this building. We can't cut office supplies and stuff like that, not to make any significant progress on this. Um, we have now probably, or will have probably closer to twenty, I think last week it was seventeen positions that had become vacant that we have not filled. We're gonna have to fill some of those positions, but some of them will not be filled. Um, there's not, so there's not a hard freeze on hiring at this point, just because, I mean, we got a building inspection position that I've gotta hire someone in the next thirty days, uh, we have someone temporarily filling in, but we've gotta have that position, just as an example, so some of them will be filled. Um, the next cuts, I'll just be quite frank with you, the next cuts of any significance here will have to be staffed.
Yeah.
You know, and, and nobody likes it, nobody wants it, but, you know, if tax referendum doesn't pass, if, if we're closed to other options, um, you know, you, you can't keep spending more money than you're taking in. And, and, uh, the department has done a great job, as you're seeing in their reports, of keeping their expenses in line with budget. That's after having you all tell me to go back to them on the budget process and find more cuts, which we did. We found out, we, we brought that back down about five hundred thousand, so we started from our original projections, came down five hundred thousand before you ever approved it, and then those other cuts and, and attrition that, that are just outlined to you. So, um, there's not a lot more to cut unless the key gets beaten.
Till you get the bone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh.
I always equate to, to living on a fixed income, um, expenses go up even though social security doesn't give you a raise. So, um, if, if our income stays flat, our services will go up, um, just like that person on a fixed income, their quality of life decreases and maybe they need to cut their cable off and make sure they turn their lights off and rooms are not used. Uh, quality of life decreases, and that's the last thing that I want to, to see, um, is that, you know, our services are impacted or anything like that. But from an expense standpoint, we've, we boiled it down pretty good, um, and from an income standpoint, um, every year it seems that we have these, what praise Jesus moments, I think we, we call them, where all of a sudden we, we kind of, something happens, something breaks loose, and we go from in the red to in the black spontaneously, uh, but we, hope is not a strategy, I always like to say. Um, so, um, you know, we've, we've got to put something in place, um, that will ensure the financial, um, success of this city.
And to, to go along with that, uh, the tax referendum that's coming up in April, just to, to speak to that for a second, that's not gonna impact this budget at all.
Right.
Government will come in in January twenty nineteen, assuming that that is passed. It's a very small amount, it's not a burden, uh, I can imagine a little bit of burden on almost anyone. Uh, sixty dollars for a hundred thousand dollar in value on that. Um, people say, well, you know, but my, my expenses are going up, and the city's expenses are going up too, even if you're not adding anything. The cost of insurance, cost of gas, cost of, the same things that, that you spend in your household go up for the city, and that tax has not been increased in over thirty years. So think about it, if you're on social security to use that, and you haven't received, I think, a, a cost of living increase for thirty years, think about, you know, the difference in your value there and the real time of money. So, um, it's, like I said, sixty dollars for a hundred thousand, less than seventeen cents a day on that, that rate, um, very few would not be able to, to afford that. And for those who are not able to afford it, elderly generally or disabled, uh, the state allows exemptions on, on those. So if you fall into that category, you have the opportunity to apply for exemptions from your, from your landlord's tax, if you want.
Okay.
We encourage anybody that didn't make one of the meetings where the mayor gave a state of the, a city address, to please go on YouTube, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is that right, website?
And, and review that because I think it explains everything very succinctly. The dollars are stated, the challenge, but remember, this is an opportunity, we're not looking at it as something that's a lost cause. It's an opportunity, I do believe at the end of everything, things will be where they want to be if we tighten our belt and do what we need to do in the end.
So for those of you out here, what he's referring to, if you go to the city of Irondale website, I, I've done a state of the city presentation to the Chamber and Exchange Club, uh, and others have heard that. If you didn't get to hear that or see that, that is all, that presentation is online now, and you can, you can go to it and access it yourself. It'll give you some of these same numbers that we talked about, the, the total debt, uh, the reductions that we've made and those sorts of things.
David, we're running short, if we only give anybody a chance to make a quick comment, they can. David, we're running short, if we don't give anybody a chance to make a quick comment, they can limit their time.
Sure, we'll, we'll get that in just one second, something I should have led with, that I want to make sure I circle back around to. Um, a comment was made to me after the, the, um, the state of the city that kind of caused me to scratch my head a little bit as far as total debt of the city. So, um, there was a slide that was shown, um, that reflected all of our bonds and our indebtedness. Uh, and the total debt being fifty-six point, um, fifty-six point two million, total debt, okay? Uh, the, the comment was that there is a certain bond that, uh, is in that number, um, the Trinity bond, okay? Um, and that, that, that bond should not be in that fifty-six million dollar number because there's money in escrow to pay it back and things like that. I verified with James today, we were talking about Trinity, because I want to understand that bond better because it's got a couple of moving pieces to it, that that number was not in the fifty-six, uh, point two. So, uh, the bond schedule that you gave to me today, this is when we were talking about Trinity bond, the fifty-six point two.
Yeah, it's in, it's in there.
Okay, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, now what I'm saying is, is we were talking about the fact that that debt, you were saying that.
The bonds that have been defused are not in there.
Exactly.
But the bond for the land which Trinity is still paying on is a part of those calculations that I gave you.
Which is the five point one four five.
Yes, it's the.
But the rest of it is not.
The rest of it is not, the only one that's Trinity is that G O twenty thirteen.
Right.
That's the land, uh, it's four point nine or something like that, and they pay sixty-two thousand dollars a month to service that debt.
So even though there's another bond out there, we're not including it in this number.
No, it's included in that, included.
Okay.
The total debt, the total debt is fifty-six million two forty-three.
Right.
That, that fifty-six million, five million one hundred forty-five thousand Trinity is servicing.
Right.
Which brings down, what the city is servicing down to roughly fifty-one million.
Okay.
Let me, let me point out that the majority of those bonds were, were initially taken out in the, what, fifteen years ago or more. Uh, I think they go way back to twenty, uh, two thousand two. And you'll see anywhere from two thousand ten to two thousand fifteen or sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Those are refinances on those bonds from way from fifteen years ago where we got lower rates. You know, as rates came down, we refinanced them and city actually got money back on any of those.
If you look at the, you look at the twenty fifteen bonds, all of the bonds that's with a twenty fifteen date was a refund issue.
Right.
Yeah.
And it gets a little convoluted when you try to figure out what caused that bond, because they've been refund, I mean, uh, refunds issued, refinanced. It's a little difficult to say, okay, depend on individual expense on a particular bond. But the moral of the story was, um, that, uh, I think we were trying to, we were sort of being accused of inflating our debt by about an additional twenty, twenty million dollars, something like that. So that's what I was trying to, cause it caused me to scratch my head and then I got to looking at the numbers and like, no, it's not necessarily the case.
If I had already put that much down, I would think you're wrong too.
Yeah, so what we were showing you is what is actually out there.
Yeah, and, and all of those were, uh, years and years ago.
Right.
So we have, uh, I mean, that I know of, since I've been on the council, just refinancing.
And the debt point the mayor made during his presentation, about four million dollars in service to that debt every year.
Right.
And not paid out till two thousand thirty-six or.
Twenty thirty-six, something like that.
Yeah, somewhere in that area.
Um, so let's go ahead and open up to questions here, uh, for a moment. I saw one person's hand go up before I went into the bond stuff. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just going to ask the city council, and again, I'm going to emphasize, you're asking the citizens of Irondale to vote for property tax increase. And these items that you just mentioned that are not budgeted, I'm asking you to show that you're serious about tightening the belt and not fund, fund them this year. We can't take on that, it is not what we term a need. And again, the reserve fund is for emergencies, unforeseen things that happen like Sam's pulling out. That's unforeseen, that can't be helped. This can be helped, what you just named here is not emergency. I'm asking people understand that we're at a deficit right now, let's not take on more. The second thing I wanted to ask is, and maybe James, you can answer this question, how much money does the city of Irondale bring in when citizens come to, uh, uh, get a new sticker for their license plates?
It's on here.
Uh, it's, it's really, well, there's a, there's a fee that's based on it, which is five dollars for the city to be able to process it here.
Right.
But even before the city processed it here, we still receive a portion because municipal, your city tax is built into your car tag.
Right, right. Okay, I'm going to ask you, please give the word out.
Sidney, our budget, our budget has seventy thousand, seventy thousand dollars.
I'm going to ask you to get the word out because there are a lot of citizens that live in Irondale that are going to get their stickers elsewhere, not knowing they can come here and renew their stickers here. And that would be some, it's not a significant amount, but we need to get the word out because every dollar counts.
I think last year's city repartiment, um, made extra with the back portion of it, probably about ten to fifteen thousand dollars for being able to renew them.
So more people know, better it is for us.
Understood. Um, another question?
One minute.
Well, I said it might run a little over. Yeah.
Since we started a little bit late.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Uh, I, I listed out those items that you said you want to wait for six months, but I did want to correct something. Some of those events, like the Spring Fest and the Jazz in the Park, that's not internal to Irondale. You know, um, Holiday Gardens and anything I do is usually kind of in our neighborhood. But those, those events do bring in people outside of Irondale. And so we do need to be mindful of the fact that it does expose our city to a whole nother group of citizens as well. So don't think that's part of this internal. The other question I had, what about the class, class train? Is that something we do for disability, for disabled citizens that we're going to wait till June to do or?
What's the exact details on the class train?
Uh, class train provides transportation, uh, for individuals that have a disability. And in the past, the city of Irondale has given a portion to class train based on the residents, the residents that they serve within the city of Irondale.
So we're not going to do that, we're going to wait till June for that, or six months for that too?
It was an unbudgeted item and I think we did the math last time, how many citizens used that? There was.
Ten?
Ten.
How long ago was it, I got it on, uh?
Yeah, I feel like we did this thing three months ago.
But it was, it was a small amount, it was a lot of trips.
A lot of trips.
It was only maybe ten or fifteen individuals that had.
In the total, what was the, um?
And our, our portion was one thousand eight hundred and some change.
Yeah, um, so we will have to pick that up.
Yeah, cause it seems like we're doing a lot and I appreciate the fact that we're saving some money, but we're, we're taking services and taking, uh, things that, that the citizens may need, even if it's ten, they may really need it.
There's a lot of things in here that I like, I agree with you.
But I mean, I'm just saying that, and then you're going to ask them to pay some additional monies and we're not specific about what those are, but just be, we need to be mindful when we're set, when we're making the decisions.
Yeah.
This, these other events are not just internal to Irondale, they are not. They're bringing citizens in to our city so they can see another side of us. And so we just need to be mindful of that and not just pick certain things we want to continue to have. We want to have something that, that includes all of our citizens, that's all I'm saying.
Class, uh.
Fair enough, thank you.
Class, class train was eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Let's go ahead and take another question real quick. Go on once, go on twice. Thank you very much for coming out tonight and listening to the.
Mr. Stewart, about a minute, give me a copy.
We're going to go ahead and transition shortly into the work session for next Tuesday.